The Planning and Zoning Board will come to order. It is May 10th, 6 o'clock. Would you please call the roll? When you are ready. Here.
Mr. Price? Ms. Gentilcore?
Here.
Ms. Denny?
Here.
Mr. Stroud?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Here.
And just very quickly, I did want to introduce everyone. This is Renee Yoder. She is the new Board Secretary, taking over from Patty. Patty will be here to help tonight, but Renee is the new Board Secretary.
Hi, Board Members. My name is Adam Marara. I am a 20-year resident of Cape Canaveral. I own, or have owned for the last 19 years, 212 Adams Avenue. I don't mean to throw around my weight, but the street is named after me, so. The reason why I would like to speak is I just have a concern for some of the zoning requirements, mainly the setback requirements of eight feet that are blanketed across the city right now. I have a non-conforming property, so on the east side of my property, I have a six-foot setback. On the west side, I have a five-and-a-half-foot setback. And after a quick perusal of a two-to-three-block radius of our neighborhood, it appears that the majority, if not all, of my neighbors also are non-conforming properties. Not one of them meets an eight-foot setback requirement. The issues that that presents with having either improvements on the property or expanding the property are a great burden. My own personal lot is 50-foot wide, so if you take eight-foot setbacks on that 50 feet, that takes up 32% of my lot, and that also happens for the majority of my neighbors. 32% of a lot is pretty significant, especially when we pay 100% of the property tax. It really leaves very few options for expanding or improving the property, other than bulldozing and knocking it down, which I would really try to, me personally, I'm trying to avoid. We love the city of Cape Canaveral, me and my family, and we would like to expand our property, but keep it period correct, keep it aesthetically pleasing for the neighborhood. If you look through the majority of the municipalities in Brevard County, they all have five-foot setbacks, with the exception of several that have a seven-and-a-half-foot setback, but those are typically on lots that are wider than 75 feet. For residents looking to improve their structures, or keep the integrity of the current structure and neighborhood, it really becomes, like I said earlier, quite a great burden. So what I'm asking basically is just for the Board to consider a review of the current eight-foot setback requirements, and consider possible variances for those non-conforming properties, or an overall change to a five-foot setback for the properties that are 75 feet or less in width. It will help improve the original structures. It will hopefully maintain the integrity of the neighborhoods without having McMansions and giant large stucco monstrosities that take up every buildable square inch of a lot. But most importantly, I believe it'll keep families in Cape Canaveral, as opposed to investors and builders that are going to come in to bulldoze these old properties, use up that buildable space, create apartments, create Airbnbs, et cetera, which is, I don't believe, the goal of the city of Cape Canaveral. So that's all I have, and I just thank you for your time and consideration with that matter.
Turn it on here. You've put forward an interesting case, and yeah, we'd have to have a good discussion about alteration of the side setbacks. We've reached our side setback, eight feet, through long struggle and debate over the years, but I see your point. So you're asking us to review setbacks for non-conforming properties with the idea of giving some relief, but what, let's dig around that fern a little bit. If you don't have eight feet, and you're going to do a modification of the property, are you saying you can't because you don't have the setback?
Correct. So in my, for my example, I bought the property 20 years ago, before I was married, before I had kids. Now I own a small beach bungalow with three bedrooms and one bath, and three females in that bathroom, in that house. So we would like to add a second story. We would like to keep it period correct, and not take up the entire buildable lot space, but with the setback requirements, I've either been, I would have to either cantilever off the second story, which would be extremely cost prohibitive and prohibitive from an engineering standpoint, or I would have to basically bulldoze what I have there in order to be able to add a second story. The only other option was to do an addition in the back, which would take up more green space, enlarge in the footprint, and create more impact, so.
Have you had a conversation about this with the Planning, Zoning, Development Director?
We, I spoke with Kyle briefly about it, and my architect, I believe, has traded a couple emails back and forth with Kyle.
Okay. So you're asking us, I'm perfectly willing to have a conversation about it. We can agenda that for an item down under the meeting. We can't do it tonight because it's not on the agenda.
Absolutely.
So, okay, we'll take a look at it.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And this item has come up a few times recently, so I figured this was a very good example of the type of thing that has been cropping up, especially in the presidential streets, or even Harbor Heights, where a lot of these homes are built in the '60s, and you know, there'll be a rear setback of 25 feet, and none of the buildings there meet that, so I don't know if it's worth looking at, or just get some ideas, but I think it's a conversation worth having.
Yeah, I think so. Times change, and have to change with the times, so yeah, we can talk about it. But we'll schedule a meeting down the road and invite anybody that has a, if you have any of your neighbor, we'll schedule that meeting. The staff can take care of that. Put it on the agenda, and if you want to, you can inform your neighbors that might have an interest, and we'll come in and have a conversation about it. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? And you're going to have to, excuse me, my voice is kind of tinny today. The, what do you call it, air is not good, and my allergies are not good, so we're just working through it. Is there any other old business? All right. We're going down through the agenda now to Board Matters, and we're going to look at the meeting minutes of February the 22nd. You have before you those minutes. If you've had a chance to review them and you're okay with it, I'd like to hear a motion for approval, or disapproval, whichever.
Steven Stroud, motions to approve the minutes from February.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And all in favor of approval of those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing any no's? Okay, we've done that by voice vote. We're all approved. Unanimous. What do you want to do about that second set of minutes? Deal with them now, the ones we talked about, or?
August, wait for Dave to get up.
Okay.
I'm sure he'll discuss it.
All right, I'll follow the lead of the staff.
Is, which, what is the date of those minutes? Is that the August?
These are older minutes of August the 24th.
Because there were some minutes that were part of an attachment for, I believe it was a second item. I don't think there needs to be any action. I believe it was just referencing the conversation that was had at that meeting.
Okay, I understand that. I found them just behind one of the, they were down in the stack when I printed it out, and I said, hmm, that's strange, don't usually see those there. So it's just part of the information package, is that it?
That's, that's correct, yeah. So it's.
So we don't have to act on these?
No, so it's, yeah, attachment one for the, for item three.
Item three. Making a note here. All right. We'll just go down through it. We're now to the item B2, which is ordinance XX 2023, and it's modifying the section 10, 110, 624 of the building height code, and it regards the building height in the economic overlay district. And if you need to, after the discussion, we can go back and have a quick recap of the economic overlay district, but that was been, that has been part of your reading homework for the last couple of years, to become familiar with that. I'm just going to defer to the staff now, and you can lead us through the report.
Sure. So this is, as you said, looking at the A1A Economic Overlay Opportunity Overlay District, which was established back in 2012, with all the goals that have been discussed, you know, economic development, creating a pedestrian-oriented environment. Part of the requirements of this district were building height requirements, so the 45 feet is standard. I can go up to 65 feet or six stories with approval from the Community Appearance Board, and there is, there is a section that would allow for heights above 65 feet on a case-by-case basis as part of a plan development that would be approved by City Council. So in the nine years, I'm sorry, 11 years since the establishment of the overlay district, we've had nine buildings that have been approved for heights of 65 feet, five of which were built, but we have not had an application submitted for a height above 65 feet. So we have taken a look at that code, and in conjunction with the revisioning that we've had going on recently, that City Council has recently adopted the new vision statement that speaks to the small-town feel, resiliency, safety, you know, we felt that there really hasn't been a need for this code section going above 65 feet, and so we decided that, you know, that's something that we would be looking at removing. And then in conjunction with that, we would be, we've been talking about looking at our development approval process for some time, making it, you know, go a little more smoothly. Right now, it's sort of, you know, CAB is the only one that looks at height, essentially. So we would like to loop the, you guys, P&amp;Z Board into that. So part of this ordinance would be adding the requirement that, in order for 65 feet to be approved, the Community Appearance Board has to look at it, and the Planning and Zoning Board has to look at it. So we've had times in the past where an application will try to just get the height approval, and they won't have the full picture, but they're, they're going for the height. CAB looks at aesthetics, they don't really look at the full site plan like the P&amp;Z Board does. So we would like to be able to have the entire site plan considered, parking, engineering, everything considered, when this height is being considered. So, yeah, I mean, that's.
Sure.
Were you ever in?
Yes, so, yeah, so if it's greater than 45 feet currently.
Less than that.
Yeah, right, you, right, so you would still look at it, but you wouldn't consider the height, but, yeah, so currently, as you know, if it's, if they want to do six stories, this is often the case with, you know, a lot of hotels typically, it goes to CAB typically after a DRC, and they'll have a concept plan, landscape plan, but they don't have a lot of the details worked out on the engineering. And we still want CAB to look at that and consider the aesthetics, because height obviously is part of the aesthetics, but we would also like to have Planning and Zoning consider the height as part of the overall site development, and not just give them, you know, an okay with, with just reviewing aesthetics. So we feel that makes the development approval process work a little more smoothly, and give staff a chance to consider some more factors.
Microphone on, and we'll take it back from you and have a discussion among ourselves here. Is there any discussion or question about that in the Board? Seems pretty straightforward. If you, while you're mulling that over, I'll fill you in with some past history, in case you're not really up on it. We passed the overlay district with the provision that we could go higher than 45 feet, as needed, as approved, and we just don't have anything in our ordinance about it. So this is a catch-up. Well, not really a catch-up, it's a normal occurrence. We were, we've had a long journey of discussion, enactment, overlay district, variations allowed by the overlay district, and now we're just coming along within the normal process of time, and adding the verbiage to our ordinance to prevent, to prevent those ideas, and one of them being that we can increase building heights to 65 feet, as requested, as approved. And that one has to go to us, and it has to go by the City Council on a case-by-case basis. Okay? So having said that, I'll just ask again, are there any questions anybody has before we make a, submit a motion for approval to the Council for ordinance change? Is there anything in the ordinance that you want to tell us about, the exact verbiage? I have one question in the, on page three of four.
Sure.
But I'll just ask, is, do you have anything you'd like to bring to our attention on page two of four?
Two, it's, it's fairly straightforward, so, oh, actually, there is something. In the past, we've, we've found that there is a requirement for setbacks if a building is going to exceed 45 stories. The language of this section 110 dash 624-1B has been a little squirrely, so, you know, some people will submit height mitigation measures in lieu of, of setbacks. I think this makes it more clear that setbacks are required, so that's kind of nailing that down.
Setbacks and step backs.
Step backs, so, yeah, so once you're at four stories, if you go above that, you know, you step back and then go up.
I'm glad you see you put an illustration. You know, that's perfectly acceptable. You can put illustrations in an ordinance.
Yeah, and this has been here, this has been in here, it's just been.
Yeah. There are some really good ordinances around the state that have, that make liberal use of.
But.
I've got one question on page three or four, the, about that step back.
Yes.
If you look at that step back illustration, you got a first dimension of 45 feet, and then you got a further 20 feet, and what is that dimension for the step back?
Yeah, 14 feet.
14, that's a 14.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a problem with illustrations, right?
You need to clean that up before we put it in the ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, this is, this is currently in the ordinance, but we can, we can clean that.
The illustration in figure 2A clearly shows that buildings above four stories have a four, minimum 14-foot step back.
Yeah.
So the illustration, that's, that's what it says. The, what Kyle is saying, the wording was a little squirrely.
In the past, yeah.
In the past. So this change in the wording is now, would make this, the wording consistent with the illustration that has been in the code since it was adopted.
Okay, and you're going to leave that illustration in the code?
The code's, yeah, the illustration stays.
Good idea.
The text change will now be very clear that what's intended is the illustration that's been in the code since it was adopted.
Yeah, we follow you. The old code was a little hard to get through. The new code added with the illustration makes it clearer.
Mm-hmm.
We're okay with that, I think. Any comment about that input from the attorney?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I want, looking at this drawing here, I see the 14-foot setback, but the way it's marked up, it shows 14 feet back from the edge of the first four floors. It doesn't show the setback to the street. There's no figure there for the setback from the street for the first four floors. Nothing there on.
Well, it's not intended to address setbacks. This is a step back.
Gotcha.
Yeah, this is.
This section addresses step back. If you want the setbacks, you go to the other ordinance, other part of the ordinance where we actually address setbacks.
I just wanted to clarify that, just to make sure I understood what I was seeing there.
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
Normally, I would see another dimension sitting in there, and I, and I don't.
Yeah, it's, so this is, yeah, specifically for the step back. I believe we have somewhere in this ordinance, there's another illustration for the setbacks.
Yeah, I think I've seen that illustration in the past. I did some research.
Yeah, so this is just specifically for that step back.
All right, just one to clarify.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Very good. Anybody, anyone else in the Board that wants to probe a little deeper? Well, I think it's a pretty well-written ordinance edition, and if we don't have any more to do with it, that we need to do, is there any, I'll just look around the audience to see if anybody has a strong feeling about it, and seeing nobody really anxious to address it, I'll just go ahead and ask for a motion to approve this amendment, recommend approval to the Council.
Susan Denny makes the motion for approval of these ordinance as written.
Thank you.
Board Member Steven Stroud seconds that motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. We have discussed it, and so Renee, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Russell?
For, for the recommendation.
Ms. Gentilcore?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
Dr. Miller?
For the motion.
All right. We've done the main part. Now let's go to the mixed-use, land-use addendum, and back to the staff again, and we'll let you lead us through that.
All right, this is the big one. So this is proposed language to establish a mixed-use future land use category to the future land use element of the comprehensive plan. Renee, can you start the slideshow? I tried not to make the slideshow too wordy, but, you know, there's a lot of words, so. All right, can you make that full screen? It's like that. Is it not? If you do like the bottom. All right, so this has been bandied about for a while, I think a couple years. I know Dave has mentioned it in the past and provided some examples, and I believe, as long as I've been here, the Board has been supportive of something like this, so staff has worked with the city attorney to come up with some language to be added to the comprehensive plan. Here, I real, I just kind of cite a few places it's mentioned, as far back as 2012. The A1A overlay district does specifically mention mixed use. Can you go back? That's right. And then it is also mentioned in the comprehensive plan, the coastal element. We talk about providing incentives for mixed use, and then it is mentioned, policy LU-1.8.1, the city shall encourage the mix of residential office, commercial, retail, blah, blah, blah. This is actually one of the sections, or the policies that is being rewritten, so we are rewriting 1.8.1. Elsewhere in Envision Cape Canaveral, 2009, there was an opportunity identified for a walkable mixed use downtown, and then at the last year's strategic retreat with City Council, during SWAT analysis, strength, weakness, opportunity, I don't know what T is, but more mixed use options identified as an opportunity. So it's been, it's been spoken about, I think Dave brought it at some point last year, at least once, and just kind of was asking for the Board's blessing, so this has been a long time coming, so you go to the next slide?
Well, okay, so if you change the zoning, you have to change the land use plan.
Correct, yeah.
So we don't have a land use plan that reflects where all this is allowed.
That's right. So we have, in A1A, I think we allow for town center mixed use, but we don't have the future land use category, so that's.
So we're going to map it.
That's what we're doing here.
The land use plan.
Yep, yep. So with our language, we wanted to really stress that this is going to be high-quality, it's going to authentically integrate a mix of uses, and it's going to really authentically capture the city's vision of what we want for mixed use. Of course, the 2019 resilient Cape Canaveral vulnerability assessment, and the 2021 resiliency action plan were considered in crafting this language, and then just kind of some general benefits, which I believe you guys all know. Flexible and creative low-impact development site designs reduces local transportation times and emissions. It allows for people to live near where they work and where their destinations are. You know, utilities don't need to be spread out, they can all be kind of brought together in one spot. Sense of place, you know, that sort of pedestrian-oriented feeling that we wanted to get from A1A. That's what we're trying to accomplish with mixed use, so.
So I'm reading the report on two of four. So due to the nature and scope of mixed-use development, it's proposed that, mixed-use development properties, projects, and then you've got a list.
Yeah.
Is this part of, of the, of an ordinance, or is it just?
This was taken.
Checklist, or what?
This was taken from the, from the language. I have that on this slide as well. Will you go to the next slide, Renee? Because I'm.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so everything in this slideshow from here on out was taken directly from the proposed language. Didn't go into the full detail, but we can, we can walk through it in more detail, as much detail as you'd like, so, but just kind of an overview. Any mixed use, just like any other future land use designation, is going to have to be done by ordinance on a project-by-project basis, and a written development agreement is part of this, so I just included some of the factors for consideration, and these, these factors for consideration are included in the language, the draft language. If you want, would that be helpful if I cited the?
But we don't have the draft language in front of us tonight, right?
You don't? We, it was part of the packet. It would be second attachment.
Oh, I see it, yep. I remember now. I reviewed this two days ago, so, okay. I got a question about the list you have here.
Sure.
Where we go down to item G, 6G, page two of four.
Okay.
So we have all these checklist items, and one of the items is there should be proven firsthand experience of the developer to successfully finance and complete one or more projects. What are the evidences? How do you prove that? What proofs does the applicant bring forward to convince us that the successful? What proofs does the applicant bring forward to convince us that the successful financing and completion will happen?
Yeah, so we're gonna, we asked them to submit a, a portfolio of similar projects that have been successfully completed in the past. And I believe there, there is some language in here directly referencing what we're, what we're looking for. But, yeah, so a portfolio, we want a proven track record, not just fly-by-night developers. So they need to show us, and the city needs to be comfortable with the idea that this is a developer who's done this before.
Which objective policy or whatever it is, show me in the, in the language if you, if you can.
Yeah.
Oh, here it is, fifteen. All right, you've got it. It's line item fifteen in the code. Or in the verbiage.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Certainly.
Yeah, I think the, the language that you have in front of you this evening is really just to kind of get your juices flowing and to start thinking about mixed use and what's important to the city and what's important to the board. We've done some research, looked at other communities and what they've done, and we've kind of tailored it to the needs as, as we see of Cape Canaveral, the city of Cape Canaveral. And so we forwarded this language to the board to let you look at it and to, I mean, we're not expecting a, a final product tonight. I'm, I'm assuming we'll need to come back at a subsequent meeting and maybe continue to drill down on that. We may have a meeting after that. So what you have this evening is just some, just some ideas that we as a staff had, and we want to get your thoughts on some of those ideas. And if you have other ideas that you'd like to bring to the, to the table to discuss, we'd be more than happy to talk about them and, and, and kind of just kick it around, basically. So I think that I'd like to, I'd like the board to kind of talk about the concept of mixed use. I'd like to get some feedback from the board on the concept of mixed use and what's important to the board. I, I know there's a lot of, I'm gonna say detail in the, in the packet that we gave you as far as specific seven-acre minimum, and it has to be frontage on, fronting on a certain road and all these, all these A-through-G criteria. But I, I think it's, I, I really would like to hear from the board on the concept of mixed use and, and your feelings on that. And whether, I mean, just some very basic questions, whether it's appropriate in Cape Canaveral. And what, what mixed use means to you and what you'd like to see in mixed use and where you'd like to see it. So really, some more, some, I, I would like to get some more 50,000-foot ideas in discussion. And I, I'm not saying I don't want to talk about the details, because obviously we gave them to you, so those are important, but.
But, but we plowed that ground. For two years, we plowed it, what mixed use is.
Yes, we have talked about what mixed use. I've made several presentations. I just, and I guess then what I'm hearing is the board as a, as a whole is very comfortable with mixed use, and you're wanting now to really get into the particulars and, and get into the nuts and bolts. Is that the consensus of the board? I don't know. Anthony, do you have anything you wanted to add?
At the appropriate time, I'd like to just add a preface to what Kyle is saying.
Okay, go ahead, you can do it now.
Okay, cause you're right, Mr. Chairman, and, and the, the board's been down the road of, of giving some, some direction, right, on mixed use. Well, I mean, that's no surprise, right? The city's current comprehensive plan specifically states that the city would at some point adopt a mixed-use future land use category.
Yeah, we gotta do a map.
Right. None, none exists today. So what this ordinance proposes is to create that land use category that the current comprehensive plan says the city would do someday. So that, all, there's a lot of detail in, in, in the language. The language amends the goals, policies, and objectives of the comprehensive plan to create this new future land use category for mixed use. Okay? And once this category gets created, sometime in the future, the city council could actually change the future land use map and, and impose a mixed-use future land use category on a specific piece of property. And you, you've all done that a bazillion times, reviewing comp plan changes to change the future land use map. So this sets the groundwork for that map amendment sometime in the future. So secondly, when you look at the, when you look at the ordinance, proposed language, policy LU-1.8.83, talks about limiting mixed use to certain areas of the city, because there are limited opportunities to support a true mixed-use project. And that policy generally talks about major transportation corridors such as portions of Astronaut Boulevard, which is A-1A, Center Street, and West Central Boulevard. Further, the proposed policy LU-1.8.4 states that the development site has to be a minimum of seven acres to support an authentic mixed-use project. So that's, that's the, the area that staff is, is proposing as a possible mixed-use designated area. Now, with that said, Mr. Chairman, the additional policies that are stated in the mixed-use category make it abundantly clear that the mixed-use designation, the change to the map, while it's narrowed to this specific area of the city, it will be a site-specific, project-specific development project that must be approved in conjunction with the change to the map. And only the city council, the way this is drafted, can approve not only the change to the map, but the site-specific development project. So you would have a map amendment with a site-specific development project that would be memorialized in the development agreement. So when you do that sort of thing, the council's gonna want to have assurances that when they approve this amendment on a rare area left in the city for redevelopment, you have a bona fide developer that has a portfolio and a proven track record to do the development. Otherwise, it's just a wasted futile exercise of changing the map. So all of the, there's a lot of other detail in here that lays out the type of criteria that the council would consider for purposes of giving this rare opportunity for some developer in a very specific area of the city, the ability to do a mixed-use development project on the city's terms, consistent with the vision and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So this is a very unique future land use map category. And there's a lot of detail that, you know, staff, myself, worked on, the manager, to, but I just wanted to preface that because I want you to understand generally how this proposal would be operationalized. Cause unless you understand that, you, you, you won't be able to put in context the criteria, a lot of the criteria and policies that are in, in this document that are being proposed.
So right now, we've got an economic overlay district ordinance that defines 10,000 feet what it is. Doesn't, it's not a land use map.
Yeah, the, the EOD is a land development regulation.
Right.
It's not even tethered to this proposal. It, it's not, it, it, it's, it's, this is, this is so unique and site-specific and development-specific. Yeah, while, while the EOD may have some applicable regulations in some cases, it doesn't help you with, with understanding the approval process to actually get a mixed-use future land use category based on this, based on what's being proposed. I mean, I, I would, I, I mean, while, while all that's important and potentially relevant, you know, I would, I would focus on, on my, my prefatory statement here about, you know, what this is actually supposed to do. I mean, this lays literally the groundwork for a very site-specific approved development project in a very small area of the city.
Well, when you say very small area, does this mean for each, each project, we have to have a land use map change?
Yes.
Yes.
To mix, to the new mixed-use designation, plus, plus a development agreement laying out the, the approved project.
Well, okay.
Have to have an, so you have to have an, you have to have a very detailed proposed project to get in the door with an application seeking a mixed-use future land use designation the way this is written. It's not a spec, it's not a speculative, open-ended land use designation like commercial, right? It's, it's, it's a different, it's a different animal because of the, you know, limited development areas that would be able to support.
I've been walking around all these, all this time with the idea in my head that we would have a land use map that said you can have mixed use throughout the economic overlay district, period. Your map has changed. Okay, you're saying that we're not gonna do it that way, we're gonna do it one project at a time. And I got no problem with that.
Property, and one piece of property at a time. The EOD doesn't, EOD, while it mentions the potential for mixed-use designation, does not, does not set forth a, a, you know, a specific guaranteed area where you can do a mixed-use designation. You know, the city doesn't have an underlying future land use designation that would support mixed use. You have a very traditional, you, you, you Clidian, all right, commercial designation that limits to commercial, residential, limits to residential, and you, you can't do a true mixed-use project in, in the city.
And is it possible, Renee or somebody, to put up the zoning or the land use map so we can all see it on a, all see it on a screen?
Not sure we have that one in the presentation.
The city land use map, you have to find that? What, I, I guess what my question is, is what's our land use map look like right now, today? I thought it would already encompass mixed use in EOD.
No, because the, when you look at, and that's a good idea to put up the map, when you look at the map, you're limited to a commercial designation or a residential designation. So you, you don't have, while, while you, you could have a property with commercial here next to residential and do commercial on the commercial and residential on the residential, that would be consistent with the comp plan. But you couldn't transpose the two on, on the properties. You couldn't do, right, the true mixed use. A mixed, what's being proposed is for projects that truly have an authentic mixed use where, where what's being proposed, it'd be a mix of residential and non-residential uses on a specific piece of property with the future land use designation of mixed use. And where, and where the commercial and the mixed use go depends on the project that's being proposed. And what's being proposed in the ordinance is you can't, no more than 75% of any one type of land use will dominate the mixed-use project. So it's not a mix of commercial-type uses, it's a mix of non-residential and residential. The non-residential commercial uses can certainly be a mix and variety of commercial-type uses, but that's not a mixed-use designation. That's our mixed-use project. City doesn't currently have a future land use designation that would accommodate what, what's being proposed tonight. And if you look at the, if we can get the map up, you can see what I'm, what I'm visualizing what I'm saying.
Can we get the map up?
And while, while Kyle's putting that map up, I'd just like to emphasize what Anthony is talking about is the unique nature of these projects. If you start applying and overlaying this, these locational criteria that are in the draft language, the number of parcels in the city that could even qualify to be considered for a mixed use really become limited. If you're looking at seven-acre tracks that have direct access onto, I think the, the roads that Anthony mentioned were A-1A and West Central and Center Street, there are just a handful of parcels that meet, just those two criteria. So I just, that's, that's an important point. We're not gonna have mixed-use projects popping up all over the city. They're gonna be very, very limited. They're gonna be very unique and special projects, too. Yeah.
This is the zoning map that serves the same purpose?
Yeah, and this, this zoning map shows, the, the red is our traditional C1 zoning district. The pink is C2, it's a little higher intensity commercial. The purples up in the north end of the city are the industrial areas, light industrial and industrial. Then obviously, the oranges and yellows are all of our residential districts. There are some green parcels in there, and those are public and recreation properties or conservation. Those are mostly our parks and city and county-owned lands.
The economic overlay enactment.
Yeah, it's not.
The overlay district is not demarcated on this map, but essentially it follows these red and pink areas in here. So that's basically the overlay district right here.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of the central core of the city through here.
Yeah.
This is not in the overlay district.
The, right, right now, the land use map and the zoning map are equal, yes? And every, every time we do a zoning change, we have to change the land use map to make them equal.
Correct.
That's a court decision, they've got to equal.
That's, the only exception would be like a, a planned development.
So now, we know where the overlay district is. It's all red, purple, and pink.
Yeah.
And in my head, I was thinking you could come forward with a, with your regular mixed-use development, whatever, however, however you wanted to build it, in agreement with all the verbiage that we've put together for the EOD. And, but now, and we didn't have to do a map change. We didn't have to be, do a land use map change. I, I didn't think so, I didn't think that. I didn't think we need to do a, a map use.
Yeah.
A map change. And Anthony has led us through a sort of logic that says, yeah, we gotta do a land use map change for each mixed use in the overlay district. Am I getting that right, Anthony?
A true mixed-use project, yes.
Yes.
Okay, I lost something.
And the other thing I want to stress, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know everything.
Is the control that the board and the, and the city council is going to have over these projects.
And that is good.
And that is very important, because these, these are, these are significant projects, and we want to make sure they're done right. So what we're, what, what the draft language spells out is several things that are important we need to point out. One, that the developer of a mixed-use project is actually going to have to conduct a neighborhood meeting even before an official application is submitted. That is going to allow the community and the developer to have some very frank discussions, to vet the project, to see how, what the, what the community response is, and to allow the developer to make any changes that he or she deem appropriate and necessary to help the project move forward. Even after that, as Anthony was talking about, there's gonna have to be a land use change, a comprehensive plan land use change, which will require public hearings in front of this board and the city council. There's also gonna be a development agreement that is negotiated for every project that will be a agreement between the developer and the city council. There'll be a public hearing on that as well. So there's gonna be a number of public hearings and opportunities for the community to get involved and have input on these projects. So that, that's important to understand. It's, that is different than the way we do things now.
Well, in, in the beginning, when we started talking about the economic overlay district. Well, in, in the beginning, when we started talking about the, uh, economic overlay district. We were trying to create a district for mixed use. Such that it would be easier and to, and we could stimulate interest in building in that. It would be easier to stimulate building and mixed use in the overlay district. But here we're coming back in now, we're putting strictures on it. We're, we're, we're making it harder to do that than in the original. In the beginning, we wanted to make it easy for people to come in and give us a nice commercial look and feel of the overlay district. But now we're putting really tough strictures on it.
The, the overlay's been very successful. If you look at it from a, um, economic development perspective exclusively, it's been very successful. Um, as far as attracting development and jobs into the city. Um, I was looking at the CRA plan, uh, a few weeks ago. And it was, the CRA plan was established in two thousand and twelve. And they made some projections to two thousand and twenty-three, basically, two thousand and twenty-two, excuse me, ten-year projection on the valuation of the CRA. Well, let's just say it was about, we've exceeded that projected evalu, uh, valuation many, many, many times over. Uh, my point is, is that the CRA, the overlay district has been very successful in attracting value into the city. And you're right, that's, that puts the city in a very, uh, enviable position. We can now, if the council, if the board, if the community wants, we can become more selective on development occurring in the city. Um, and that's what, I think what you're seeing tonight before you, um, is we're starting to compress down and starting to make it more, I don't want to say difficult, but it's, it's, our standards are becoming higher. Where we, where our requirements are becoming higher. And, um, it's, it's, uh, it's a good thing, I think. I think the community can be very, um, encouraged by, um, where we are.
Right, and, and the, when you read the A1A EOD zoning designation, the first sentence for the introduction of the EOD. I hate that name. Uh, the A1A EOD provides guidelines and standards for public and private development projects in commercially zoned areas along A1A. While the zone may go beyond, and there's other examples of it, it all, it's referring to these commercial areas. And tell me where in any of the, in, in any of the comprehensive plan policies and in the zoning code for commercial zoned areas where residential is allowed.
If I'm remembering accurately, when we talked about the EOD. You had to put your, uh, mixed use in a commercial, it, it, the EOD is all commercial anyway, it's all commercial property.
Mostly, yeah.
Yeah.
Small little pockets of residential, whether or not it's all commercial.
For most properties, it's commercial.
Yep.
So if you're going to have one, uh, a development property, it, it's going to be in commercial. And now you come along and you say, now, EOD gives me the, the permission or the leeway to propose mixed use. So I can live above the shop and, and so to speak. I can do my business on the ground floor and live above it and, or just to keep it simple. So I didn't think we would need to do all the things you're talking about tonight, just to make that happen. Man brings a business in, wants to put it in commercial, okay, it's commercial already. It's a commercial business.
Right.
But we want it to, we want to live in it and be near it for, for different reasons. Possibly rent in, in the, in the area to cre, create, uh, a customer base nearby. But that's, I thought that's what the EOD already put in place.
It, it kind of, it set the idea, it kind of creates the concept.
We set the table.
What you're having, what we're starting to discuss this evening is actually the nuts and bolts and how we really get there.
And I got no problem with that. I'm just digging around this thing to try to adjust my thinking, because I've been walking around all these years thinking we weren't going to do it this way, but we're going to do it, if you propose it, we do it this way with all these strictures, I call them. Not a good word.
Guidelines.
Guidelines, more, more rigorous, more rigorous guidelines. I guess I'm okay with that, I just, I'm just learning now. I'm learning something new that I've been walking around thinking we weren't even going to go that way.
Well, I'm, the, the, there's a reason, probably there's a reason why the comprehensive plan contemplated and instructed that there'd be a mixed-use future land use designation prior to the EOD even being adopted. Is because it's necessary, in my view, to have, if you want to do true mixed use.
Yeah.
Is to actually do the, the land use category for mixed use. So you can create these projects that are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Right, not just, I mean, you just can't be consistent with the zoning code, it has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Under Florida law.
Yeah.
And, um, try not to, going forward when we have this discussion, and there's a lot of meat and potatoes in this document.
Yeah.
Um, don't conflate a live-work unit with a mixed-use project. Mixed-use projects and which is intended to be a ver, rather significant development project of, of, of minimum seven acres. The live-work units, there's another little section in the proposal that puts a provision in the comp plan authorizing mixed-use units. The small commercial, um, operation with a residential unit on top, okay? That's not mixed-use category that we're talking about, that's, put that as a separate little, um, authorization, so to speak. Okay? All of the guidelines that we're talking about, that you've read, those don't apply to the, the live-work units or the work-live units, whether, however you want to describe it.
But, but the mixed use, since we're talking about it, is a live-work project.
On, on a, on a larger scale.
On a large, large scale, it could be a combination of a, of a, a, a hotel, but like a, you know, a retail shops on the bottom with condominium units on the top, that's not live-work.
Got it, got it, yeah.
I, I'd like to piggyback on that, just for a second. What, what that slide you see in front of you is really what I think is a live-work unit. Um, and there is a demand in the city for this type of living. Um, a perfect example, and I, I don't like to spick, point out specific properties, but I will in this case, Rocket Gym Building. You know where they're located, just, they're by Cumberland Farms? Right by Rocket Gym by the VFW, that building right there. Well, the owner of that has a nice little loft space in the back and she's wanted to, for years, she's wanted to live in there. But that's zoned commercial. And guess what? Can't do it, can't have a, 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 a residential apartment in the back, um, to, for the owner to live in and run, run the operation up front.
Well, hang on just a second.
Okay.
Somewhere in this journey we've been on. We have approved situations where the owner lived over the, uh, business, i.e. mini warehouses. There's a mini warehouse across from the post office on, uh, what is that, Center? What's the name of that little street?
Yeah.
Center.
Mm.
Center.
Center Street, yeah.
Um, there's one there, they live above it, and we, we approved that with our eyes wide open.
Yeah.
And then there's another one up at the corner of, uh, Central and North Atlantic.
North Atlantic.
Uh, we approved that with our eyes wide open.
Yes.
Now, so we got, we've got them. Now, how, what, by what mechanism in our ordinances did, if, if they're in there, they got to be, we wouldn't have proved it.
That's a good question. Yeah, they are allowed in our, but those are, those, those, I'll call them caretaker units, are specifically allowed for mini warehousing. Say if a.
Did we specifically tie it to warehousing?
Yes. If a doctor wanted to, or an accountant, or a physical therapist wanted to live there and, and, and run their operation in an office in the mini ware, and, and, you know, live there, they couldn't do that. That's strictly for a caretaker for a mini warehouse.
So, so we're undraveling all that now and we're trying to make it so we get our arms around how to regulate. Okay, I, I'm seeing the light. And, and in that light, and of course it's, our agenda says, we're just reviewing the proposed language, we're not making a decision tonight.
Right.
In the light of what I've learned, now I want to go back and read it again, think about it, be better prepared to talk about it. I think it's a good idea. I think it's good guidance, Anthony, thank you for taking us through that. Having pontificated that wisdom, do you, uh, does anybody else on the board want to dig around this plan, blint?
I'd like to ask a question.
Sure.
Uh, propose something. So let's say at the corner of Central and, uh, A1A, that we don't have the actual seven acres required for the mixed-use development. Let's say that we want to bleed that over into, uh, this section or an R3 section. Would that be a possibility if they needed that for the footprint, for the development, that this would give the leeway to bleed off into the R3 over there? In other words, we're, we need the space, we need these seven acres, maybe we don't have it, maybe we want to shape it in a different manner. Would this give us the leeway to, for the council to be able to do so?
Yeah, I think my, my, my initial thought is yes.
Because it is residential end.
Right, if, if, and, and that would require the developer to assemble.
Yes.
However much property he or she would need to assemble to get the minimum requirements. And then what we would do is, let's say part of it was comp-planned and zoned commercial and part of it was R3 or whatever it was. We would do a comprehensive plan amendment on that entire tract once it was assembled. And we would give it the proper mixed-use land use designation and.
It would give the developer a little bit of boxing ability to, 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 to shape it for their project.
Right, and that would, and those, those would all require public hearings and public input and.
Same process.
Same process, right.
Yeah, and the EOD and that enactment, again, gives us the umbrella to use that kind of thinking. And invent those processes to, uh, to, to make them legal and rigid. Okay? That's good, that's a good, good, uh, good discussion. Anybody else want to throw something into the, on the fire? Okay, okay.
I just wanted to ask, what cities did you all, uh, look at to come up with these proposals? You said you looked at various.
Well, I was, yeah, I was going to say, I mean, personally, when we were doing research, um, I know that Oviedo we had looked at, um, is somewhere where I've seen development that's kind of.
City of Coco.
City of Coco.
Winter Springs.
Winter Spring, yeah, we have. Did you say Stanford? Yeah, yeah, places that, that we've seen that I think have a, a similar sensibility as far as what they would like to see.
Maitland.
Maitland, yeah.
Maitland, yeah.
Cool, thanks, those are good, good, good cities.
Planning treatises, um, you know, cumulative experience of seventy-plus years. Trying to, you know, to prepare something that, you know, the board can consider that fits, tries to fit. You know, the city of Cape Canaveral and all of the surveys. Planning meetings that we've had over the last.
Yeah, I, I like it, and I like the, the process that you're proposing with all the involvement and the different reviews, and I think it's a good.
I want to mention one more thing, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm, I don't mean to monopolize the discussion, but I, I think it's important. And what we haven't really talked about tonight is densities. Um, right now, as the board knows, we have a maximum cap on our residential development at fifteen units an acre. That's as much as you can do. This language proposes a higher density than that, up to thirty units an acre.
But, but that's already the density allowed in commercial.
No.
No? I thought we had a.
There is no residential density in commercial.
Residential was.
There's a unit density in commercial.
Well, our hotels, our hotels require a minimum of a hundred and fifty units.
I'm, I'm going to shut up, I don't know what I'm talking about.
It used to be.
You know what you're talking about, it's like, when you say residential density, we're talking about, in my mind, it's dwelling units, right? Full bathroom, full kitchen, all that other stuff. And the commercial designation, that, 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 that's not, um, currently, currently permitted in the comprehensive plan. There is no, there is no density in that respect. On the other hand, we talk, as, as David said, when you're talking about hotels, for example, units. Yeah, it comes into play.
Right.
But units are not under the residential density caps.
Right.
Because there isn't, there, there are no residential density authorization language in the current comprehensive plan for commercial.
Okay, good, good counsel, okay.
Lamar, where you may be thinking about that thirty units an acre is? The city of Cape Canaveral from, for a long time, had a minimum five-acre tract and a hundred and fifty unit minimum for hotels, and that works out to be thirty units an acre. With the adoption of the overlay district, that minimum five-acre parcel requirement went away. So you could, in effect, you could put a hundred, you had to still do the hundred and fifty units, but if you could, and I, this is, if you could do it on two acres, which you can't, but if you could, you could, you could do that, and that would be a, that would be a density of seventy-five units an acre. Or, most, most of the hotels that we've seen done are between three and four acres in that area. Um, but.
Let me ask you this.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, does our discussion tonight and the ideas we're entertaining open a loophole for, uh, say, another mom and pop? You know, we keep constantly pressured, constant pressure, that people want to add, build a really small, nice little motel.
Yeah.
And they turn into, you know, what's. So, that's why we got that strong, that strong hotel regulation. Does what we're doing tonight open that up? You said, you, different acreage, smaller acreage, got to be a minimum of seven acres. But is there a loophole in all this where you could come in with two or three acres and build a motel on the A1A? Don't want that.
No, no, the, the hundred and fifty minimum requirement is not going away. So, and that, that typically weeds out the, the, the smaller, under-capitalized projects. So I, I'm not, I can't imagine there being a loophole that, that you're specifically concerned about, Lamar, so I, I don't think that would be the case.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I, I just wanted to finish my thought on the thirty units an acre, the, the density increase. By right, fifteen, up to thirty. And that's a negotiated, between fifteen and thirty is a completely a negotiated number. And that, the close, the, the more of those amenities or low-impact development concepts you work into the project. The more good things you do for the community, more permeable pavement. Um, I, I don't recall all, all, all of them, but there's quite a few of them in there. The more of those things you do, the more, um, potential density you can get. It's a, it's completely a negotiated, um, um, process. So I just wanted to make that point, because that's, that's an important point.
Where is that, uh, point in our, in all this paperwork? I, I'm swimming in paper now, I spread my papers out to keep myself organized in the discussion, but I saw it. There was, uh, the council asked specifically.
Yeah, if you look at, you know, for the next meeting, we're going to put page numbers on these, so we apologize for that. But if you flip through to policy LU 1.8 A2, A as in apple, two?
1.8?
A as in apple, two. It's, it's.
Okay, I see.
This right here? It talks about, uh, mixed-use future land use map designation may only be approved by the city council in conjunction with a development agreement. Setting forth the authorized land uses, densities, intensities, conceptual site plan of the proposed development project drawn to scale by a duly licensed engineer, a development schedule, commitments, amenities and other specific details of the proposed development deemed relevant and necessary by the city council to. necessary by the city council to ensure compliance with objective LU 1-8A and other applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan and city code. The development agreement shall control the future development of the property and be deemed a condition of approval of the ordinance and recorded against the subject property and shall run with the land and become effective if the ordinance approving the mixed use future land use map designation becomes effective in accordance with law."
That's pretty strong.
That, that policy is what approves the pro, a specific project with all of those specific details that I just read into the record, if council authorizes it. So not a completely comparable example, but an example, similar example, would be the Holiday Inn project slash be the Cape Corrie project.
It's out on the beach, the Ron John project.
That was, that was a very detailed, negotiated development agreement by the city council that laid, lays the predicate for the, for that project to be built, right? According to the, in steps, according to the plans that were specifically approved by the, by the city council. And right now, they're, they're implementing the next phase, which is the Holiday Inn Hotel that they're building on a portion of the property that's zoned commercial. Can't have the, the hotel on the other side of, of the road there, because it's, it's got a different designation, but on that property, they can have commercial. But that's all part of the, of that development agreement. Similar concept, not exactly the same, there's, but similar approach.
Yeah, that project, but that project has tried for years and years to get its nose under the tent to get a hotel on the beach, but city's done a good job of staying on top of that. But those developers have been very wise and very clever in the use of their land and their requests, so
You got the timeshare units. Timeshare units.
Yeah.
You can see it up there on the map, you know? It's, you know, timeshare in the residential area, and, you know, the hotels falls on the commercial property.
Well, this has been good education. Didn't mean for us to run too long tonight, but good. I'll, I'm going to take this back and read it in a new light now, and I think it's good work. I'm going to read it again with more interest. Good counsel, Anthony. Good, good thought. Anybody else want to talk about it some more? Okay. We got work to do. We're going to read this thing, and we're going to deal with it again. But tonight, we were going to, we were to discuss it, and I think we had a good discussion. And that brings us down to, unless anybody else has any more on this subject? Anybody want to ask another? Well, we'll have more questions, and we'll have more opportunities to keep working this. It's good stuff. It's opening the city into, giving opportunities to build mixed use, very tasteful mixed use.
Mr. Chairman, what, what I would suggest then is if, if, based on what we've heard tonight, we can go back and maybe put it in ordinance form, and that might help the, the board go through it and, and review it, it'll be a little bit more structured, in, in a format that you're a little bit more familiar with, and so we can, we can bring that ordinance back next time, at the next, next month, and
I agree. I mean, at the very least, I think we need to put page numbers on it, and then we need to put the, the legislative numbers down the left-hand column, because the discussion, it'd be easier to discuss points if you can refer to page numbers and align.
Yeah.
Apologize for not doing that for this meeting.
That's okay, it was a good draft, and we're, we can, we can work with it as it is till we get a better version. Anything else, David? All right, that brings us to the reports and open discussion. Anybody have anything they want to say about, say something about for, see, we don't have any outstanding reports due.
The legislator, legislature finished up their, their work up in Tallahassee, and there are some land use-related bills that made it through the session, so I think some, some point in the future, you know, when, when those bills get executed or signed by the governor, we may, we're going to probably need to brief you on some of them.
Yeah.
Because the legislature every year seems to get involved in local zoning issues. That, that's probably a, a meeting in the future, we can
Yeah, I, yeah. Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to mention one thing. Several months ago, the, the council and the board discussed parking for restaurants and bars, that issue.
Yeah, we let it study for that.
Yeah, Kyle and I have, we're getting close to having something that we will be bringing to the board. We could probably even do it next month, and it's going to propose a, just some ideas on alternate ways of, of addressing parking for those two uses. So I didn't want you to think we'd forgot about that. That is, that is slowly churning away, and we're getting, we're getting fairly close to having something to present.
Yeah, I take it you're looking at how other cities are approaching the idea, too. Okay, bring it forward when it's ready. Uh, what else? Open discussion. No Airbnb comments?
Well, no. Other than the, the Senate put the kibosh on some Airbnb stuff.
What, you, what do you mean, put the kibosh on it? You can't zone it out of existence.
Yeah, no, there, no, there was, there were some, there were some regulations, of new regulations that were approved by the House.
Okay, we'll need to look
And it went over to the Senate in messages, and the Senate didn't care too much for the House product, and a couple of senators actually gave some impassioned statements regarding the problems that are occurring in neighborhoods.
Yeah, it's changing the nature of our neighborhood.
So they didn't, the Senate did not support the House version of the, of the bill, so it, though it died, actually got some senators that actually stood up and clapped.
Mm-hmm.
When they, when they, when they rejected the House version. Maybe there's some, you know, understanding now of how it's, while maybe a local issue, but it's making its way up into being heard and felt, sort of Senate.
Yeah, I've felt strongly all along that that didn't belong in the legislature. That's a local issue. Any, any more comments? All right, I'm going to, the Cheyenne Indians say, when the horse is dead, it is good to dismount. So, without further comment, anybody else want to do anything? All right, let us be adjourned.